Patrick successfully completed all of the rigorous phases of the hiring process to include written tests, interview board, executive interview, intense background investigation, polygraph test, psychological and online personality tests, physical capacity test, drug and alcohol screening, and a medical exam. Officer Shook has lived right here in Arc City since 2008. Officer Shook most recently served as a corrections officer at the Cali County Jail for about two years before accepting the job here as a police officer. Officer Shook is a veteran who served our country in the Army from 1988 to 1994 where he was a military police officer. While in the Army, he received several awards, the Army Service Ribbon, National Defense Service Medal, Sharpshooter Badge 9mm Pistol, Marksman Badge 45 Caliber Pistol, and Army Lapel Button. When asked during the interview process what he believes is the most critical attribute a police officer needs to be successful today, he responded by saying that officers must be fair and consistent. At this time, we wholeheartedly welcome Patrick into our family at the Arkansas City Police Department, and I would ask the city clerk at this time to administer the oath of honor.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Kansas.
And the state of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Welcome.
Welcome. How'd that hear? Ma'am. Ma'am. Glad to hear you. Thank you, sir. Welcome. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Onto the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, which consists of the regular minutes from the December 6th and December 2nd meeting, ratification of reappointments to boards, and the approval of renewal serial malt beverages licenses for 2023. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Everyone signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
No business. Hold a public hearing regarding the proposed 2022 amended budget.
So we're going to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion. We open the public hearing to hear the proposed 2022 amended budget.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. You're up.
So this is the time that you can take questions.
Does anyone in the public have anything to say about the amendment to the budget for They're jumping. They're all ready. They're very excited. They want to do this.
Seeing no discussion. From no one, anyone. I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for the proposed 2022 amended budget.
So we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Did you have something?
Well, we can speculate why others are here. I don't know. Never mind.
Okay. All opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed.
Today we now consider first reading of an ordinance amending specified funds in the budget for the city of Arkansas City for the year beginning January 1, 2022.
One more time. Let's open them up.
Okay. So I'm proposing amending, there's eight funds listed in your packet. Actually, the water fund. Basically, like everything else, chemicals and supplies, we had a lot of water main breaks, and we also have the adjustment to salaries, so all that contributed to the water fund. Sanitation funds, same thing, salary adjustments. We had several hydraulic issues on our truck, which you guys know are very expensive.
Fuel.
Fuel, yep. The library fund is just to give me enough room to distribute their last tax distribution of the year. Municipalities Fight Addiction Fund is a new fund created this year that requires a budget amendment to create that fund. The debt service amendment is necessary to accommodate the issuance of that geo bond for the charter field. And then the healthcare sales tax, unplugged healthcare sales tax, and CID sales tax, just to accommodate the extra sales tax that we got to be able to distribute that out.
Anyone have any questions? Hold on, he's thinking.
Seeing none, I would like to make a motion that...
That question.
Yes.
Can you move that over, please? Just a hair, so I can see what they... Not to exceed $7, or... Please tell me what that says. Now, I'm assuming we're not exceeding $7 from the CID sales tax.
I don't even know that.
That's part of it. Part of the amendment. But the public...
Seventy-one thousand.
Seventy-one thousand?
Yeah.
What were you reading? Nope, that's incorrect.
It's not this right here.
Yes. That's 700 and...
I want to say it's 750.
It's 750,000 is actually the amount.
Yeah, it's 750,000. I'm looking it up on the national action items.
Okay.
Did I make my motion yet?
Yep.
I would like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the specified funds in the budget for the city of Arkansas City for the year beginning January 1, 2022.
Seconded. Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Did you have something?
Well, we can speculate why others are here. I don't know. Never mind.
Okay. All opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed.
Today we now consider first reading of an ordinance amending specified funds in the budget for the city of Arkansas City for the year beginning January 1, 2022.
So I'm proposing amending, there's eight funds listed in your packet. Actually, the water fund. Basically, like everything else, chemicals and supplies, we had a lot of water main breaks, and we also have the adjustment to salaries, so all that contributed to the water fund. Sanitation funds, same thing, salary adjustments. We had several hydraulic issues on our truck, which you guys know are very expensive. Fuel, yep. The library fund is just to give me enough room to distribute their last tax distribution of the year. Municipalities Fight Addiction Fund is a new fund created this year that requires a budget amendment to create that fund. The debt service amendment is necessary to accommodate the issuance of that geo bond for the charter field. And then the healthcare sales tax, unplugged healthcare sales tax, and CID sales tax, just to accommodate the extra sales tax that we got to be able to distribute that out.
Anyone have any questions? Hold on, he's thinking.
Seeing none, I would like to make a motion that...
That question.
Yes.
Can you move that over, please? Just a hair, so I can see what they... Not to exceed $7, or... Please tell me what that says. Now, I'm assuming we're not exceeding $7 from the CID sales tax.
I don't even know that.
That's part of it. Part of the amendment.
Seventy-one thousand.
Seventy-one thousand?
Yeah.
What were you reading? Nope, that's incorrect.
It's not this right here.
Yes. That's 700 and...
I want to say it's 750.
It's 750,000 is actually the amount.
Yeah, it's 750,000. I'm looking it up on the national action items.
Okay.
Did I make my motion yet?
Yep.
I would like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the specified funds in the budget for the city of Arkansas City for the year beginning January 1, 2022.
Seconded. Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Okay, now I'm going to voice what my concern and confusion was. I think the flow of this might have been better had we presented this and then opened a hearing for comment on what was presented, as opposed to having a hearing and then closing the hearing and then presenting the information. That makes the citizens query about that number, 750,000, to be more relevant. Now, we'd already closed the hearing, is what I'm saying. Then we have public comment.
But we didn't allow him to speak and ask a question.
That's correct, but I'm just saying, the sequence of things, to present the information and then open it for public comment might be more prudent.
I'm just reading it as it appears.
I understand. I'm saying we can adjust that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify with... What? Roll call.
Commissioner Jennings?
Roll call.
Okay. All in... Am I in favor?
Your call. You're first up.
Okay. Usually you say, those in favor respond. Aye. Affirm. Affirm.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Spielman?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Ganger?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to renew the contract agreement with Recount Attractions LLC for economic development consulting services in an amount not to exceed $48,000.
We have people who wish to speak. Yes, come forward, sir. Say your name.
Hi, my name is Dustin Schutze. I have a citizen ID 2115, Cedar Crest Court in Arkansas City. I've been looking, once this came about, most recently, this topic of discussion, I did a little bit of, a little bit, not much, but I did a little bit of research, and at first glance, we paid $48,000 for, and I'm going to say from, is it, were we in the, this would be the fifth year, or this would be the fourth?
Third.
It would be the third, if they... So we've spent $100,000 roughly, $96,000 being exact, to get nothing, other than a feel-good and some, and some files, or reports. Now, I went to their website, and the 2022 reports, which they provide, only shows quarter one. And here we are, you know, a fourth and goal, and there's, there's no data out there available to, for us to look at off of his website. There's no property listed on his website. And when I say him, I'm referring to retail attractions. But there's plenty of other properties listed, but there's none for Arc City. I guess my concern is that we're paying someone, not even in this state or county, $48,000 a year to promote growth within Arc City, but we're not getting anything in return, other than an outdated file that is pretty close as a cut, copy, and paste of the files for the other towns that he represents or is a contractor with. Just changed the numbers a little bit here and there, but, so that's one of my concerns. Another concern I have is, what were we expecting? I mean, were we expecting new businesses?
Well, we're in the process of working on some several, we can't talk to what businesses that he's worked on coming here, but the Dollar General was the first one that's being built down here, came out of, that people came out of Tulsa.
Okay. Now, to my knowledge, though, the Dollar General remodeled their business plan seven years ago, and they were already going to do this. It was a piggyback on him to justify $48,000, and seriously, I mean, did he invest $48,000 worth of time in the last few years to bring Dollar General here? I mean, is that, that's $96,000 to bring a Dollar General that was already coming? Did he facilitate the negotiation of the land?
Well, we didn't know that at the time, if they were coming or not, you know.
I know hindsight's 2020, but that is, I'm stating what I've been told.
Yeah.
But, I mean, so what, I guess, what does he bring to the table in negotiations? Does he broker the land? Does he, I mean, is it just him saying, hey, talk to Arc City? I mean, how involved? I mean, what were you getting for our $48,000 a year?
What's his job description?
Correct, yes.
Mr. City Manager?
Well, there are, so on the Dollar General deal, what he did was, he brought the mine mantle from Rup Helmer to the city. I know Rup Helmer is the one that, that's the location for Dollar, and obviously, he had marching orders to find a spot here in Arc City, so that was, that was kind of where that worked out. He kind of helped bring the good parties together, work through the details of that piece of property that we ended up on, was pretty complicated with renovations and things like that, and so he kind of helped through some of those issues. The other, you know, like you said, he puts together documentation, he proofs up our community's demographics and stuff, and tries to go around and interest businesses to come here, and...
But he's not doing it.
And there is, there is a couple of things he's working on right now that we can't talk publicly, but there, but he is working with some retail groups on a fairly good-sized project that would possibly...
Now, I looked at his page, again, and it listed all the people that he is a liaison with. We're talking Quick Trips, Pierwood Imports, stuff like that. There's not going to be one in Arc City, and we all know that. There'll never be. All, all those things on his list, Dollar General was the only one that spoke to Arc City, that speaks of Arc City. We're not a metropolis, we're not a suburb witch talk. I mean, I, I just think the money could be allocated better in-house. For example, utilizing local investors that have these ideas, but are willing to put in the work and, and help Arc City grow, is the point.
You have anything further?
Yeah. Secondly, or lastly, I'll also finish with this, is that it's just disheartening, because that's, that's a lot of money, especially for someone in Arc City. That could be a salary, a city employee with benefits, that all they do is, they dedicate all their time into trying to drum up the business, which we already pay economic development, and I'm sorry, I have one more thing. Cali First. I was told it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 a year, that's what we pay them?
It's based on expenses. I think we have 45 budgeted for this year.
Okay, so close. So that's $100,000 a year, and we get a Dollar General out of them. All the investors that have came in and opened up the restaurants and the mom-and-pop boutiques and whatnot, that's all out of their own pocket. So I guess, with that being said, I think we could allocate the $100,000 more that we're spending and better utilize it in-house than farming it out. And if you go look at their, at Cali First's Facebook page, all they do is promote job opportunities from companies that are already here. I didn't, I haven't seen anything in the last three months that showed anything about trying to grow Arc City. It was just, hey, the hospital's hiring, you know, Webster Burner's hiring, or this is hiring. So, anyway, I just thought I'd share that with everybody. It only took me about 20 minutes to find all that stuff out. I implore everybody to do your homework when it comes to your money.
Mr. Schutze? Address the commission.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Commission, do you have any questions for him? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dylan?
Mr. Jellings? Say your name.
Brandon Jellings. I guess, so we've been paying it for two years, we're looking to renew for the third year. Dollar General's already here in town. We know that, right? So we can't shut a business down in the north part of town, move it to the south part, and say we opened up a new business. That's just not how economics works. If they were already here, we move them, or they move themselves. So out of two years, if that's all he's brought to the table, I don't even know why this is a discussion, why are we renewing a contract? That's just bad business. Is there anything else that he's done? I mean, as far as future projects, it takes time to build projects. I get that. I'm a developer, that's what we do. But is he selling us pipe drinks? Because if he's trying to give us retail, retail won't work right now in Arc City. You've got to give them something to do before they're going to come in and shop in Arc City. And I understand that this guy, he does not work downtown, which is a huge push in Arc City, right? Our downtown. He wants nothing to do with downtown. Is everybody aware of that? The one spot in town that needs a ton of work, this guy wants nothing. In fact, he doesn't even do that kind of stuff. So if we're hoping for some big business to come into town, because this guy who doesn't live here, doesn't pay taxes, has nothing, no skin in the game, I feel like he's just taking our hard-earned tax dollars. So I implore you not to renew his contract. I think we're throwing good money after bad. Thank you.
Commission, do you have any questions for Mr. Jellings?
Well, I might say that we had this discussion on our workstation, you know, about extending it one more year, because he's got two major projects that we can't discuss, that he's been working on for over a year. And I hate to give up one more year, you know, to see if we can't bring him here, because it would benefit, benefit the people of Arc City. We talked about extending it for one more year and see if it comes true. If not, then I'm through with him too, you know, but...
Well, I've got two big business deals in this town that will happen next year.
Good.
And they're not pipe dreams.
Yeah.
See what I'm saying? I'm putting my money where my mouth is.
I understand that, and I thank you for what you're doing.
So, I, I understand. I understand. But he hasn't brought it to the table. So if I was a good businessman, right, at the end of the day, if I'm going to go, if I'm going to want my contract renewed, I'm going to drum up something, right? And I'm going to have big business ready to go until they're not. This is Arc City. Arc City. So what skin does he have in the game if he doesn't bring anything? Is he going to pay us our $48,000 back? Otherwise, there's no repercussions. All he does is skin this for one more year. So I appreciate the fact that he may or may not, but where's that been for 24 months? So at the grand scheme of things, if you're going to say, hey, I'm going to pull your contract, he's going to find something, somebody, that may or may not be interested. And the track record is, for 24 months, he hasn't done anything, and he's been paid almost a hundred grand. So I understand he's got maybe a housing project going. We're doing that. Right? In fact, we backed out on one because Arc City Industries thought they had a bigger developer come in to do it, and nothing came of that. So I've heard it once, I've heard it again, right? We're doing the work here in town, and we're not asking for the money. So I feel like you guys as a whole are wasting tax dollars money. And in 2020, when I heard about this, I walked into his office, and I told him at that time, it's a bad deal. You can't be giving someone who has no skin in the game in Arc City $48,000 to try to bring a business into Arc City. It's not going to work. Here we are, three years later, and I'm still saying the same thing, with zero production out of this guy. So...
Thank you.
Anything else?
Commission, do you have any questions? Thank you. Did you want to speak?
I do, yes, actually.
Say your name.
Sarah Jellings. And I just wanted to say, I have had a conversation with Mr. Ricky Hayes. Thank you. Regarding a property that we have purchased, and he was wanting to bring in a large retailer, I suppose, and use that building, and I shut him down. Not sure if that's one of the projects that you're holding on to, but it's not going to happen, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear from both sides.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
That's not the project.
Good, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because you said you've been working on a couple for the last year, and I'm like, if that's one of them, it's a no-go, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schutze, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, a lot of...
Come forward.
It says not to exceed $48,000. So what if we, I mean, what if we pay him a performance-based salary? Say, we're not necessarily, we're not tickled, we're not happy to the extent we're going to just throw more money at you. Why not say, okay, we've given you $100,000. Let's rewrite your contract, and when you start actually showing us and proving that you're worth that, we'll start paying you. Make him work for his dollar. That's my last. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on the subject? Okay. Commission? Well, Mr. City Manager, you have anything to say about the contract?
No. At the last meeting, you guys asked me to, was it with him, about being present more, and I did talk to him about that in the interview. Is he here?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I said, I guess, he's not here. I guess that answers that question.
What question did it answer?
Mr. City Manager said that he had talked to him about being present more. Mr. Schutze said, is he here? Then he said, I guess that answers that question.
Well...
Mr. Jellings?
I guess I'll add one more thing about being present, is I'm on the planning commission also. So you said he helped facilitate kind of the land deal, but all that came through the planning commission. He never showed up to one of the meetings to help facilitate all of this. So I'm not sure, when you're facilitating something that we're paying this guy to do, and he didn't show up at the planning commission that we're paying him to do to help facilitate, because he got to walk us through some of the stuff, but he never showed. So just food for thought.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Warren, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I think, I don't, you know, I understand where you guys are coming from, and I understand that, but it, you know, like he told us right off the bat, it's going to take almost a year, two years to get and gather the information and all that stuff, putting everything together. I mean, you can shake your head no, but I'm just...
If this doesn't work, I mean, if you're a developer...
You got to come forward.
Yeah, okay.
But anyway, like I said, you know, we've got several things that's percolating right now, but, you know, I don't know, I think that this, we're far...
So I appreciate the fact that he may or may not, but where's that been for 24 months? So at the grand scheme of things, if you're going to say, hey, I'm going to pull your contract, he's going to find something, somebody that may or may not be interested. And the track record is for 24 months, he hasn't done anything. And he's been paid almost a hundred grand. So I understand he's got maybe a housing project going. We're doing that. Right? In fact, we backed out on one because Arc City Industries thought they had a bigger developer come in and do it, and nothing came of that. So I've heard it once, I've heard it again, right? We're doing the work here in town and we're not asking for the money. So I feel like you guys as a whole are wasting tax dollars money. And in 2020, when I heard about this, I walked into his office and I told him at that time, it's a bad deal. You can't be giving someone who has no skin in the game in Arc City $48,000 to try to bring a business into Arc City. It's not going to work. Here we are three years later and I'm still saying the same thing with zero production out of this guy. So.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Commission, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to speak?
I do, yes, actually.
Say your name.
Sarah Jellings. And I just wanted to say, I have had a conversation with Mr. Ricky Hayes. Thank you. Regarding a property that we have purchased and he was wanting to bring in a large retailer, I suppose, and use that building. And I shut him down. Not sure if that's one of the projects that you're holding on to, but it's not going to happen. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear from both sides.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
That's not the project.
Good, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure because you said you've been working on a couple for the last year and I'm like, if that's one of them, it's a no-go, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shute, you have a follow-up?
Yeah.
Come forward.
It says not to exceed $48,000. So what if we, I mean, what if we pay him a performance-based salary? Say, we're not necessarily, we're not tickled, we're not happy to the extent we're going to just throw more money at you. Why not say, okay, we've given you $100,000. Let's rewrite your contract. And when you start actually showing us and proving that you're worth that, we'll start paying you. Make him work for his dollar. That's my last. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on the subject? Okay. Commission? Well, Mr. City Manager, you have anything to say about the contract?
No, at the last meeting you guys asked me to, was it with him about being present more and I did talk to him about that.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I said, I guess, he's not here. I guess that answers that question.
What question did it answer?
Mr. City Manager said that he had talked to him about being present more. Mr. Shute said, is he here? Then he said, I guess that answers that question.
Well.
Mr. Jellings?
I guess I'll add one more thing about being present is I'm on the planning commission also. So you said he helped facilitate kind of the land deal, but all that came through the planning commission. And he never showed up to one of the meetings to help facilitate all of this. So I'm not sure, when you're facilitating something that we're paying this guy to do, and he didn't show up at the planning commission that we're paying him to do to help facilitate, because he got to walk us through some of the stuff, but he never showed. So just food for thought.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Warren, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I think, I don't, you know, I understand where you guys are coming from and I understand that, but it, you know, like he told us right off the bat, it's going to take almost a year, two years to get and gather the information and all that stuff, putting everything together. I mean, you can shake your head no, but I'm just.
This doesn't work, I mean, if you're a developer.
Do you want to come forward?
Yeah, okay.
Anyway, like I said, you know, we've got several things that it's perpetuating right now, but, you know, I don't know, I think this, we're far kind of, I think we're too far into it in the sense of to stop it right now. I think, you know, give him one more year and see what happens, you know? That's my personal feelings, but it is what it is.
If he told you guys, based on what you just said, that it's going to take a year or two years to even get the numbers right, why did we do a one-year contract? Why didn't we do a three-year contract? I mean, because to me, if you're committing and he's telling you that if you commit with me, it's going to take you more than one year, why didn't we come up with a multi-year contract versus a year-by-year? Then we wouldn't be sitting in this boat because, hey, he's still got 12 months on his contract. Maybe he'll pull something out.
Yeah.
But as we sit right now, on a year-by-year basis, he has proven that he is, hasn't proved anything.
Which, which would he? Answers the question, why we didn't do a three-year contract? And explains why, the question was, why didn't we do a three-year contract? And that's the answer.
Which was?
Because we see annually what the performance is.
I guess my, my point, Mr. Commissioner Jennings, is that if he told you upfront, basically what he's saying is you're not going to see anything for a year or two. It's going to take time. Then why didn't we only give him a year? Why didn't we give him two years or three years for this to develop? I mean, if it's a grade card that we're looking at and Mr. Hayes has failed first semester, he's failed the second semester, and we want to give him a shot at advancing to the next grade in the third semester? He should repeat first and second semester, just like any other bad kid. And, and maybe he should give us something to pay him for instead of us paying him ahead of time. I mean, when, when an employee goes to work, they get paid, they don't get paid upfront. They work 40 hours, then get a check. I guess that's.
Thank you.
One more?
Yes, Mr. Jellings.
You're a businessman, right, Jay?
Hmm.
Say you pay someone $48,000 to market for you, okay? First year, you see zero ROI. You write the check for second year, hopes and dreams of getting an ROI, and you don't. And now we're sitting here discussing a third year and your business has seen zero revenue from this guy. Would you hire him to continue to market for you as a business owner?
Probably not.
It's very simple. It's very simple. So here's what happens in business, when you do business, right? You present your business plan and then if it takes a year, 16 months, 18 months, two years, Compass took us 18 months to get off the ground. This next project, we've been working well over two years on this next project, we're in turn loose of next year. I understand it takes time, but you present that, you present that especially to people that are writing checks. You present that in writing, saying, this is what we are going to do. And then you can backtrack and get all your financing, get all this stuff in place. But we've got zero ROI, which is horrible business, and we're asking for a third year. No business owner on this planet, especially in small-town Arc City, narrow-minded, narrow, is not going to spend that kind of money again. So as a commission, I implore you to be, look at it from a business standpoint, because it should be run like a business. There has been zero return on that money. And you cannot sustain without income coming back in of some sort.
So we've heard from the public, the matter before us is whether to renew the contract or not.
Prepare a motion.
Well, I'm kind of waiting.
Well, let me say this. Most, everybody's talking that it makes sense, you know, and I understand that. Maybe what we ought to do is postpone it till the first year, have him come up to our city commission meeting and have him talk, you know, talk about what he's done or what he's trying to do and so forth, give him a little more information to the public to see what happens. I mean, you know, I don't know. Can we see about even do like a six-month contract? If he's got stuff works, see where he's at six months in if he can't. I mean, at least not, not tonight, but he needs to be come back and heard. That way we can, if we're not in it and there's nothing to show, then it's done.
Chance, Commissioner, the city manager told him specifically, you need to be here more often. Your face needs to be seen in person. He's not even here via Zoom or cell phone.
No, I agree. I don't disagree with that. I've been on the fence a lot on this whole thing.
And you guys, the commission, who hired the city manager? He basically said, I don't have to play your game. Oh, I make the rules. You just write me a check.
Okay.
The request from the governing body was in the, I'm sorry, in the previous meeting, was for the city manager to speak with our economic development specialists about coming to us with reports in the coming year. All right? So we, we want the record to reflect. We did not say to the city manager, to say to Mr. Hayes, when we meet, you need to be here. We did not say, can he come to the December 20th meeting? The request was that as part of the contract year, that he would make appearances and update us on his activities. I, I can speak to that because I'm the one that made that suggestion, that in 2023, that we would schedule times, that he would come and give a report, whether it be physically here or virtually here, please. Thank you. So that functionally, I think that that's a bit overzealous to say that he should be here. That was not our request that he come to this meeting.
But we said if we approved the contract, these were even things that we wanted to add to it. Mr. Jellings?
Is this not a job interview for, weren't you supposed to vote tonight?
Yes.
So is this not a job interview for him? I mean, someone's going to write me a check for $48,000 to bring stuff to the city? This is a job interview tonight?
A performance review and perhaps is a more.
Well, you're, no, it's a job interview. You want to pay the guy $48,000 next year. You're debating whether you want to hire him again or not.
Madam Mayor, I do not want to have a debate with this gentleman from the floor.
I understand.
This time, okay?
I have my hand up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to make a motion? I'm not going to make a motion.
Good, didn't he? Maybe not?
No, nobody's made a motion. Whether going to approve it or not approve it, the stipulation's about 2023 was if it was approved, correct? Mr. City Manager, thank you. I'm sorry? What happens if we don't make a motion?
He's dying.
I'll make a motion, we approved this contract.
We have a motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second to approve the contract. It is a voice vote. And I will ask all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign, nay.
Nay.
No, two, two to two.
I know, I've been on the fence for the last two months on this thing. I mean, it's the guy, I mean, he's been, I see all the concerns. I hate. I'm torn. I mean, it's, I know it's coming down to me, I knew it would, but I just, I got to vote. That's why I hated to do the year. I hated to do a whole year on this. I think the six months would have been a better way to go with that. And that's why the tabling, in my opinion, would have been the way to go, see if we can't get at least a six-month contract, see where he's at, those developers or those projects that are in the works aren't going any further, then I think at that time, those six months, just say, all right, we're done. We're, we haven't seen it. That's why I was asking about, can we, I'd like to table it, but.
We made two motions on the floor in a second.
With an abstain. I mean, I would like to table it, but.
Abstain and it doesn't go anywhere.
It's just a two-to-two vote.
What is?
No.
Abstain is a no vote.
It's a no vote then.
The motion fails.
The motion fails. Is that your final?
No, I, I mean, it's just, not done. I mean, the whole thing is, six months would have been the way to go to get some, get some answers from the man. But now we're stuck to doing it a whole year or no year, so.
Okay, well, by reason of the Robert Shaw's order, that motion failed. I, I want to, I would like to submit a motion that we.
I'm sorry, yes.
How many voted yes and who voted no? Because I.
I'd be a no then, affirm, so.
You'd be a no?
But I'd like to.
Okay, I had your yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. But I'd like to see, at least see him six months into this thing. I'd like to see something, see, give him, give him a chance to show himself. If it's six months, he's not there, then I think we've all got our answers and we're not any further. We're two and a half years in and those projects, are they going to continue or they won't?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to submit, let him into that motion that we would extend the contract with Retail Attractions on a quarterly basis, subject to the agreed-upon reviews and reports.
That would be better if he shows up and he's doing what he's doing, then great. If he's not going to be here, then.
That's the motion.
Then we know what our solution is. I would second that.
Thank you.
Excuse me. So the first one, Bill?
Yes.
Joining us from 13:37, O'Nomen. When it's three to two, I checked to see that it had to be a new motion, said an amendment. I believe that, I believe that's right. Was that, you said amended?
Well, okay, but the record reflects an emotion.
Okay.
For a quarter.
A new motion. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
On the agenda is a resolution authorizing the city of Arcana City to renew a contract with Retail Attractions LLC for economic consulting services for an amount not to exceed $48,000. That is an annual contract. My motion was to offer a, enter into a quarterly agreement, subject to interface disappearance and satisfactory report as we go forward. We understand, I'm going to add to my commentary, we understand that Mr. Hayes may not be interested in a quarterly contract and withdraw services.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye. Are you opposed or?
I'm saying. You've got it, you've got three to.
Yeah.
Two to go.
We carry, motion carried.
Three, two, or two, one?
Three, two.
I'm sorry, what?
Who do we ask for clarification?
verification on what?
Well, once I can go back through the minutes, you know, I will get you a clarification.
Okay, the question that I need clarification is with, the first, the agenda, the original.
Did not pass, exactly like that.
It did not pass.
Exactly like that.
Okay, thank you. That's all. I never heard a definitive that failed.
Right, yeah. Because they went right into the next motion.
Don't you have to have some basis to abstain?
Typically, abstention reflects a conflict of interest or some other matter.
I would have known, I started the first one, not using a reason abstain.
That's why abstaining is considered a no vote, but it's probably more prudent to vote no, unless there is a conflict of interest.
All right. Moving on. New business. Okay, so discuss agribusiness building use charges.
So another painful conversation. Jared Framey went back and looked at the yearly expenses. So it's right at $35,000 a year just for the building to exist, the heating, the cooling and the electricity and the maintenance and those types of things. And that doesn't include supplies or anything like that. So it's real, about a hundred dollars a day for that building just to be in our inventory. So, so that's just key to keep that in mind as you, as you think through.
One of the things that we discussed is allowing nonprofits to use the agribusiness building, which was donated to the city. And the top of the list was a toy run that was just done. If they have to pay, they pay to be in the toy run, they pay to buy the toy, and they come and have lunch in that building. If they have to pay, they will not do it. If they have to pay a hundred or $200 a day, whatever that nonprofit fee would be. Then we have the rec center, which uses the building for the IYQ program, the father-daughter dance, the mother-son blitz. They say if they have to pay any sort of fee at all, they may not be able to have those projects available in the community.
What about fundraisers?
What about fundraisers?
Good night, fundraisers.
You want them to hold the fundraiser to be able to use the building? Is that what you're saying? Well, if anybody has used IYQ before, there's a fee that goes along with your child or your enrollee, but they pay, what do they pay? Counselors? Counselors and.
They pay counselors and then some of the games and stuff they buy some of that equipment for. Some of the food, I think, is donated through grants. I think the lunch food is. I don't know about the snacks, they're bottled or anything like that, so.
So our dilemma is, do we make everybody pay for the ag building or just the for-profit people? And they want to use it for craft show or for a club meeting or for something where they're going to make money off of it. The other thing that came up was the Arco Lala float. If they were going to be in there for, I guess they give them five or six days in there to build their floats and get everything ready. And if they were going to have to pay for it, then you had one day. And that became a huge problem for them. And a lot of people dropped out because they couldn't, couldn't get it done. Commission?
Well, of course, I do a lot of nonprofit stuff and, you know, I think anybody that's going to, you know, profit off using the agribusiness building ought to pay for it. But our nonprofits, you know, it's hard enough to get volunteers to do those nonprofits, you know, and they don't only have to go in and, you know, pay for it on top of that. So my feelings, I'm just talking from myself, would be that, that the nonprofits should not be charged for the billing. It's just too hard to find volunteers? It's just too hard to find volunteers, you know, to do that kind of stuff. And some, you know, sometimes the, the city gotta give back to, to the people of Arkansas City, and I think that's one of, you know, on the, on the, uh, the, uh, I'm trying to say the, non, uh.
Nonprofits.
Nonprofits. The local nonprofits.
Yeah, local, local nonprofits.
Their money investments go back to the community.
Exactly right.
Madam Mayor, I'm with the Kids Run, which is the biker group that comes in and, and, uh, we no longer do toys, but we do clothes because we felt that was more of a necessity than toys. A lot of people are willing to give toys, but they need clothes just as much so. As a matter of fact, we've been to area schools already and distributed a lot of the clothing that we've already received. We've been told by several of our sponsors here in Arkansas City that if we do not do it in Arkansas City, they will not sponsor us. I'll be honest, we can't afford the two hundred dollars to have the building because they're not gonna make up that two hundred dollars that fast. So it's kind of a dilemma.
Okay. I'll have a motion. Yes. You have to come up.
Could you create some sort of scholarship or donation fund that for entities like the two hundred dollars that would like to use it? I wouldn't have any problem committing, you know, a check every year for fifty dollars. A fund that would help pay for certain, you know, organizations or groups. And I think more people would follow suit if they knew that that was a, an, an available option. And then instead of people worrying about do I have to pay for it or not, we could use that fund of donated money to offset.
I think it's easy. We know what the nonprofits, uh, organizations, organizations are in Arkansas City. We know what they are. We've got the list of them. And anything that, that's not gonna be charged for a profit, I think, you know, ought to be exempt, you know, from that, from the, you know, the, the use of the building charges. That's the way I feel about it.
The, the argument or, or the rationale is, is donor-funded organizations or operations. Are donor-funded. It's a slap in the face to say, uh, I'm going to make a a charitable contribution to something, and then you're going to take what I make a charitable contribution to and then pay an access fee. I mean, so, you know, I don't know if reciprocity is the correct ratiology. We, we might, and I, I realize I've kind of wrestled with this, both sides of it, but, but functionally, uh, it's, it's, it's contradictory to have a donor-sponsored event that pays a fee back to a taxing jurisdiction for access to do something charitable in the community. So, so, so we, we, we do see that, that piece of it, component of it. I think where we were, at where we were with that is that sometimes people with the best of intentions and great ideas use facilities for, to generate revenue to do other things. And, and, and it was, if you're going to charge a fee for admission or fee for participation, if you're going to walk away from there with a net proceed, then a portion of that might go towards, uh, and, and then that gets very complicated. It gets incredibly complicated, but, but functionally, what we're trying to do is not say, people operate off charitable contributions, should use those charitable contributions to pay an access fee for a facility that is funded off of taxable dollars.
Are there, uh, Jennifer, um, are there organizations that use and pay a fee for the ag?
Organization has a.
Tennis Association.
Yeah, Tennis Association has a contract.
Okay. And are there any other?
Well, the car shield, they pay.
Yeah, car shield.
Yeah.
We have Rhonda Jordan holds several events there, and she pays.
Okay.
And then we have a lot of, um, called Kinsays, for when they turn sixteen, we have a lot of those for big families.
Okay.
Um, but I would say eighty-five to ninety percent of the usage is by nonprofits down there, so.
Okay. Anyone have anything else?
We don't need to change anything, do we?
Well, we all seen, we all seen the list of nonprofits. I think it was like fourteen on that list.
Yeah, we got an email.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
At this time, I move that we no longer charge nonprofits with the use of the ag building.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
It's tempted dips thing.
No.
I discussed request from SCK Health for a.
Good evening, Mayor and Arc City Commissioners. Um, the CFO of the hospital, Debbie Hockenberry, and I thank you for the opportunity to present um, an update from STK Med Center, historical and some of our current needs. In the past three years, STK Health has increased the total net patient revenue by thirty-eight percent, or six point three nine nine million. Increased over the same time period, we have increased the number of employees by seventy percent. That includes nine employed physicians and six nurse practitioners. Our emergency room volume in twenty twenty-two is over five thousand two hundred patients, and we continue to have thousands of inpatient stays and outpatient services for our community. From December first of twenty twenty-one to November thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, we had fifty thousand four hundred and fifty-four patients visit our World Health and Specialty Clinics. We appreciate your time, and I'll turn it over to Debbie to share some of the current financial restraints that we have.
First of all, thank you so much for giving me a few minutes of your time. Would like to start out with some good news. Um, if you can do the next slide. Uh, SCK Health qualified for a, um, tax credit for, in twenty twenty-one, quarters one, two, and three. We are set to receive three million dollars by July of this next year. This is the employee retention tax credit. So, next slide. So we're in a pinch of cash right now. We're having some cash flow issues. And it would be very, very helpful if we could borrow, say, a million dollars and pay it back when we received the three million. And like I said, it's, we're expecting to receive it sometime before July.
They're talking like a bridge loan for that short.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, next slide. So now I want to go over some upcoming challenges that we're facing, um, for the, the next year. So our behavioral health unit is a unit that treats, um, fifty-five and older patients that need some mental care as an inpatient. And in the past, we have been, um, very profitable with this unit. The CEO of the management company retired, um, gave us a six-month notice, so we hired a company, then named Horizon. And they have struggled to get up to speed and up to where we need to be. And since they took over in July, we've had losses instead of gains, like we're used to.
This started in February, let me see, you're right.
Uh, no, that was, um, mid-year that Horizon started.
Okay, yeah, I know, but when the other firm quit, it was in February when we got the notice on them?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's been, um, some challenges with cash flow. Okay, next slide. Um, another challenge that we're facing is the Kansas Provider Assessment. So, this is a, um, well, the hospital provider assessment created in two thousand and four. Um, it generates revenue from all PPS hospitals in Kansas, which are turned and matched with federal Medicaid matching funds. So, um, all these funds go, come from PPS hospitals to help fund, um, hospitals on the Medicaid program. So everyone, um, PPS hospitals in Kansas contribute to this fund, and then, um, everyone benefits out of the, the same pool of money. So these funds are used to enhance rates to all Kansas hospitals, PPS, CAH, and physicians. And the Critical Care Access Improvement Panel, this HCAIP, administers the program. So there's some changes. This was started in two thousand and four, and the changes are recently happening. So, um, let's go to the next slide. One big thing that changed is the assessment rate was fixed at one point eight three percent. And that one point eight three percent was fixed at two thousand and ten inpatient net revenue. So they look back at your cost report and find your two thousand and ten net patient revenue, and then they tax, taxed you at one point eight percent. So now the change is three percent, and it starts on two thousand and sixteen numbers. So we were moving forward, and we're doing it on inpatient and outpatient net revenue. So this is going to move forward annually. So it's two thousand and sixteen, it's gonna move to seventeen, eighteen, nineteen as the years progress. It won't stay fixed like it was for several years. So does this generate the problem? Okay, next slide. For SCK Health, our assessment, we need to pay in one payment of two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in this month, and then pay another payment of two hundred and seventy-three thousand in May. When you compare to what we paid in the past, we paid forty-eight thousand dollars, um, in the same month, twice. It's a four hundred and sixty-seven thousand doll, four hundred and sixty-seven percent increase. So the funds to be received, we will receive seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, and we receive four hundred and forty-seven thousand in prior year. So it's a seventy-four point eight percent increase.
So. I have a question. So it's a seventy-four point eight percent increase on the cash in, but the cash that you have to pay to get that offsets that.
Right.
So when do we get that seven eighty-one in twenty-three? In twenty-three, when would that be?
It's paid quarterly.
Okay.
That'll be the total then for the year, approximately, yeah.
Right. Okay, next slide. So adding to this, these two things happening, there's another thing on top of it that's calculated in this. Uh, and it's the Medicaid DISH funds, the DSH funds. And what we do is we, um, turn in and prove that we treat uninsured or underinsured patients, and then we get money back from the state. But this year, their calculations are different, so we get less, even though we treated more patients. So next year, we're gonna receive six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, and we're used to receiving around eight hundred and seventy, or up to a million dollars every year for just this program. So it's a decrease of twenty-two point three percent. So when you look at all these three things together, okay, next slide. So the money paid in, four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars more. Received three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, and then DISH funds is, are reduced by a hundred and ninety-three thousand. So overall, it's a difference of three hundred and eight thousand. And the timing of these payments in, and when we receive it, is quite challenging, and they're, they're having trouble with all the hospitals being able to pay that first payment. And I made arrangements with KHA and Medicaid, or the state, KHT, to make a monthly payments of forty-eight thousand and change instead of the, the large payment. Another challenge that's, uh, we're facing is the three forty B program. Um, it continues to decline, um, month after month, we just receive less and less and less of the three forty B funds. So just an example, from twenty-one to twenty-two, it decreased three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Okay, next slide. This is a big one. This is something, um, this low-volume Medicare adjustment is going to be extended one more year, and the hospital's, um, impact is five hundred thousand dollars. So with all those other things, and then if we don't get this extra low-volume bonus on the, from Medicare adjustment, it is going to be quite challenging. So just, it's, we're gonna be okay in twenty-three, but they say do not expect it the year after that. Okay, now I want to show you, um, Medicaid numbers in Cali County. So January of twenty twenty, you can see adult and child. The number has increased by twenty-seven point five percent from twenty twenty to ten of twenty twenty-two. So we treat more patients, there's more patients in the Medicaid program, and Medicaid doesn't pay well. Okay, next slide. This is straight off of our cost report, our twenty-one cost report. And if you look at line thirty-one at the bottom, it says total unreimbursed and uncompensated care costs. It's one point nine million dollars.
So it's basically a write-off.
Exactly. Okay, next slide. Um, wanted to show you our bad debt by financial class. So the first section there is, um, one-one-twenty-two to ten-thirty-one-twenty-two compared to one-one-twenty-one to ten-thirty-one-twenty-one. And the difference in those is the little box in the bottom corner. And we have increased our bad debt by seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And most of it is private pay, but we still have the, the Medicaid patients, that little bit, that people have their spend-down money that they still don't pay. Blue cross was.
So it sounds like the patients co-pay, so to speak, then?
Yes. Yes.
And then private's just the non-insured patients?
Yes. Okay, next slide. Um, here's our bad debt and charity care, um, from ten-thirty-one-nineteen, and it ends at ten-thirty-one-twenty-two. I estimated the final two months to make it twelve-thirty-one. We're at three point eight, has increased for bad debt, and charity care only looking at five hundred and eighty-five thousand. And the charity care, only looking at $585,000. Okay, next slide. Contract labor. So in healthcare industry, um, nursing, um, labor, employment has been a challenge as far as getting nurses to be employed instead of being in contract, because they can make more money contract. So they quit their jobs and they find an agency that they can, um, work with and get, they charge us, say, $90 an hour, and they make it $60 an hour. We don't really know what the person ends up getting and how much the contract company ends up getting. But it's been a problem just.
You gotta pay the contract person $90 an hour, and then whatever worked out between those two is up to them, between the nurse and the company.
Right. So, um, there's two lines here, um, '21 and '22. And you can see how it has dramatically increased in 2022 for those just 10 months. I didn't even estimate out the final two months. It's 1.3 million dollar increase. Okay, next slide. Another thing that we've been challenged with is the cost of medical supplies. The cost has went up on items with shipping costs, freight, surcharges, they, they'll get you anyway. And just overall, we're busier than what we were, so we are going to have more supply costs. Dr. Ansari is, um, picking up his business, so those orthopedic supplies are very expensive. And that's, um, that would be into the surgery supply.
You can't pass that on?
No, no, we have a separate price that we can charge and we can't, I mean, we could increase our prices, but we would just have to increase our contract, our contractual write-off.
Yeah.
Only people that get affected with those increased prices are the private, the non-insurance. They're the ones that have to pay the full price.
And, and we do give them discount.
Yeah, but yeah, I mean, that's how that would, if you're in contact with an insurance company, you're just going to get what you get from them.
Okay, next slide. Duziant is a company we work with, um, for, to get our supplies from. And they make sure that we get the best price viable. Okay, next slide. And they did a projection on what they foresee in 2023. And a couple of them that, um, are, I want to point out to you is orthopedic supplies is the second one now. It's going to go up another 2.8%. This is predictions. IB Solutions are going to go up 5%. Medical Supplies, another 3.5%. Regular surgical supplies, with you got hammers and blades and those kind of things, 3.2%. And then food, another 10 or 12%. Overall, they're predicting 4.2% increase in prices. So just wanted to lay it out there, we have some challenges ahead of us. We're going to do the best we can to overcome these challenges. We have some things in the works. Jeff works real hard with the, um, see what, we need the best benefit from the hospital. I do have some handouts for you. I just received our KJ, if you're interested. And it's just like Hospital Finance 101. If you're interested in that, okay? Just to leave me in that measure. And let me know if you have any questions. I think that's all I have unless you want to review to some specifics on anything.
Well, you might talk about, you know, with all these increasing costs, we are doing some things that hopefully internally will help. It's like shutting down, you might talk about the Winfield Mall Guards, you know, some things what we're doing right now.
Um, the one thing Jade referred to is the Winfield Medical Arts Building. We had, um, a few providers up there and the staff to go along with them. And we pulled them out and put them in Arc City Clinic. And it's, um, very comfortable in there is what I hear. Lots of room, um, not, anyway. So, um, that is going to help us in the long run because we were paying 11,000 or 12,000 in rent every month. We were paying all the maintenance fees, um, any kind of utility costs, water, and so that will.
Well, you kind of figured out it's be almost half a million dollars a year savings by doing that coming in through our bottom line, so that's going to help.
We just did that, um, effective 10-1. We started off at Arc City Clinic, so it'll take a while to see the effect of that. Uh, one other thing we did was, um, we've had a lot of contract labor in ICU. And to keep that unit opened and staffed was very, very, very expensive. And we just didn't have the patient load and need for that. So that's one thing that, um, we closed that unit temporarily.
And our behavioral site that you talked at was shut down back in February. Then we get back up. That in the years passed, that generated almost, uh, like 1.2 million dollars to our net profit.
Right, it was 100,000 a month.
Yeah. And it looks like, hopefully we'll get that back on. Did we ever get any more people hired this last week or just?
Um, we have a new temporary program director and she's fantastic.
That was a key person that we was trying to get, right?
Yes. So she's with Horizon and she's going to really make a difference, so. I know that we're interviewing, I don't know if they hired this week.
Mission, do you have any additional questions?
Hey, just, just, uh, my, my thought processing, uh, listened to the discourses earlier about, uh, uh, the perception of, uh, business strategies and public funding. And I think that this is pretty much an evidence that sometimes what we do with public funds doesn't always follow the perfect business model. You know, arguably, we would say at this point, uh, if we were following the perfect business model, uh, walk away. But obviously, we exist to serve the public and to meet a, a community need. And so sometimes you eat a cost. That's, that's the difference between for-profit business and public service. Is sometimes you have to eat a cost in order to serve the greater common good. I think that's one that, that, that is a dividing line. We don't use the Wall Street model of profit and loss. We do, are we serving the general public and meeting a humanitarian need? Sometimes you eat the cost, so, yeah, it's, it's just.
Well, the thing is, you can't refuse anybody that comes to the hospital. We have to pick everybody. So we can't pick and choose who we take. I mean, everybody comes, everybody gets service, so.
It costs a lot more to not care for them than it does to care for them, actually. Uh, the state tries quite, uh, aggressively on sending people away.
Right, okay. Well, as far as the bridge loan of a million dollars, we've got 3 million coming in, we now, in, in June. So the hot, the city will not be out any money. When that money comes in, we'll be paid back that million dollars. We just need that for operations.
Right.
For, until we get that money coming in. Do we, do we want to, how do we want to do this?
Well, there's some information you guys need to know about city finances before you make decisions. Well, we have budgetary laws and cash laws and stuff like that that we have to follow. And we also have obligations that we've made as an organization too, so, um, probably ought to jump into some of that before you make decisions about loaning a million dollars. So, um, and you want to read or you want me to do it?
Do you want to proceed or?
So there's another flyer with the.
Thank you for your presentation.
So, the only, the only fund that you can just pay anything out of is general fund. The utility funds, um, you can't write checks out of the utility funds for something like this. They need to stay for utility use, except for you could transfer it to general fund, then it could be used for other things. So that's, that's an option there. But, um, where we're at, right, so you guys just tonight passed a budget amendment. And so to do a budget amendment, you know, I guess it's a, almost a, what's a 20-day process? You have to, you know, have a public, you have to publicate, you know, a public hearing, have a public hearing and all that good stuff. Not time for the end of the year to change our general fund. So, uh, we had a maximum budget authority in the general fund of 11,000, 11,711,410. Um, our expenditures to date, um, as of December 19th were 9,580,930. So we have projected expenses through the end of this year of 1.3 million, 649, you know, 490. And then we have encumbrances of things that we haven't received bills for that'll be from this year that'll, um, that'll come in after the year that we have to be paid. And, uh, those are estimated to be at 445,650. So that leaves us with a remaining budget authority of 378 and 339 for this rest of this year. So that's the most you can expend this year safely. I mean, uh, these numbers are.
What about next year?
But we knew that we weren't going to do anything on '22.
Right, so, but, so that's, that's, that's where we're at this year. So we start a new, new budget authority next year, but then we have the cash part of it. So, um, basically, um, with the numbers we just talked about, that loses a projected cash balance of 1.2 million dollars, uh, uh, starting, starting January 1st. Um, again, remember, we don't get any tax dollars or anything in for a while. And so that, we have to operate the city on that 1.2 million. We also haven't made a commitment to the bond council that we would, uh, keep a million dollars, um, to carry over each year at a minimum for, to help, um, shore up the bonds that we have, um, through the Public Building Commission on the hospital building now. So those are some things to keep in mind as well. And, um, when we budgeted for '23, we, we, uh, budgeted 1.8 million dollars as carryover. So because of the cost increases that we have seen, um, this past year like everybody else, um, our, um, estimated budget carryover wasn't as much as what it should have been. So we're already looking at cutting our budget back because of that now, so, so just keep that in mind.
Do you have a reserve? What's your reserve that you are going to carry over? Is it 1.8?
1.2.
That, what's on your sheet is.
The 1.2 is what you're carrying over into. And how much additional sales tax? How much up is that for the year?
I don't know.
Projected, okay.
It's a little bit higher than what I projected, a little bit, but I was close, so.
You said that, or was wastewater we had to count? If he's going to have to pull, it had to be pulled out of that or what account?
Well, right now, the wastewater account has the most cash in.
Yeah.
But we also have a lot of, um, obligations there.
Still others, but others have already been prepaid, is that right?
Yeah, we'll have this alley project that we need to fix, uh, it was already committed to doing. Um, and then, I'm not sure, we're, you know, we're still bar, you know, in the, using the borrowed money stage of the wastewater treatment plant. So we'll see how that all plays out and see what that looks like. But that, that would be the fund that would have the most cash in. I don't know, I don't know what year, what you see with that, but.
Well, I'd say this, maybe look at that fund after the first year and see if we can't pull that money out of maybe that fund. Or at least look at it, you know, that's where it's going to have to go.
Jeff? Would a smaller amount work? You know, if we could come up with, say, 350,000, would that get you through a little, a little bit? And see if we can just do it in small bites instead of this great big bite at once?
If we could look at that perhaps over like a six to eight week time period, I think that would be doable. I did want to bring up.
Every eight weeks get another, or.
Well, every pay, every pay.
Every pay period if possible. And I think, I mean, the commissioners, of course, you all know, but I think sometimes the public may not be aware that as a city-owned hospital, we're not able to get loans or lines of credit, um, because of a cash basis law, even though our finance system's not on that system like the city is. So, um, we don't have the opportunity to be able to go and say, I need a six-month bridge loan, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help.
And obviously, we're in unprecedented times. Nobody has lived through price increases and, and the things that we have in the last couple of years. And I appreciate all the physicians who came here, uh, tonight to represent and stand behind the hospital and the community. I think that was wonderful of you and, and I appreciate your time as, I'm sure the rest of the commission does.
So you're, you, we're all right on this pay period. Your next pay period is what, the first, what's your next pay period?
In two weeks, around Friday.
This coming Friday?
The 23rd. And we're all right there or?
Well, I hope so.
Okay.
They constantly have money that comes in, um, but they also need to make sure that they can do what they need to do.
So within the constraints of, uh, the municipality and cash basis law, if we're amenable to, uh, if we're amenable to bankrolling the payroll, what does a functional timeline look like? Obviously, we have to continue to pay the municipality's bills also. What, what can we, what could we do? What can we do?
The only, uh, transfer of.
We have to transfer.
Wouldn't even do a budget movement for that, since that wasn't a budgeted transfer.
So we have some, we have some statutory things that we have to do to be in compliance with the state of Kansas in, in, in how we would respond to this request. Um, and I think, you know, I've slept since then, but I think on Friday, we talked about, uh, the staff trying to research that and, and, and give us kind of the most optimal, uh, response, uh, options that we had. I think it's cool, Madam Mayor, you said that they're here to stand behind the hospital, but I also think it's cool that physicians are here because of, they care for patients in this community. And I think that's a huge commitment on their part to, you know, they, they could cut and run. They could cut and run, but they're people here. I mean, that, somewhere down the line, I don't know, I got a theme right now. Some stuff you do because you care about people. You know, profit's good too, but, but some stuff you do because it's the right thing to do ethically and, and physically in doing that. And so, so we appreciate the physicians who are here because they care about what they do and the people that they treat. So, so we do want to know what we.
What we need to do, direct the staff.
Yeah, just direct the staff.
So we're, yeah, but I think we're, I think we're there in terms of what, what options we have. We, again, as I said, we have statutory constraints that we have to operate through. Uh, and we've already taken some binding options as a governing body on things that we've committed to, uh, projects. So, so we have stuff out there. We have to kind of mix this with that.
We need to tell the staff, we got to tell the staff, we need to look at that obligations on the, you know, what you. obligations on the, you know, what you, what you just said, but are we going to just do on a paycheck, my paycheck? I mean, if they need money, then we, you know, we ask them, you know, for their, their, you know?
Can we do that?
Well, if you have the budget authority, I believe you could.
Yeah.
Again, it goes back to having cash and budget authority for the amounts too.
That's what we need to work on, cash and budget authority, so we can be able to, you know, help them out until we get to that 3 million dollars in, you know, because I don't want to see the door shut, you know? It's, that's not the purpose of the saying. Purpose saying that we own the hospital, city, city owned hospital. So it's like another department and we got to figure out how we're going to do it. We got 3 million dollars of cash that's going to be coming in and somewhere between now and June, you know?
Well, that comes all in one lump sum, correct? We've gotten, I mean, they verified that they will get the 3 million upfront. It's not. Some of them make you do it as you use your tax credits, you get it back in portion, but this is one. All right, so it's more of a refund than a.
And they said the IRS is six to nine months behind. So that's where we said July is nine months. We hope that it comes in.
Sooner, yeah. Sooner the better.
Well, so we want to give the staff authority to look into the, for, for every two weeks on his, for, I mean, for the. Payroll, is that what you want to do?
Is, I don't know, is, is that?
Lot of motion.
No, yeah. It's just a direction.
Is, is that, is that a doable thing? Every couple of weeks to?
Well, yeah, once, I mean, you know.
Do we have an amount in mind?
Yeah, I guess.
Up to a million dollars is what they're asking, you know, but.
For the cap, what they're talking about.
Yeah, cap up to a million dollars. Well, we're, we're talking about maybe 250,000 dollars, you know, two weeks and maybe not the next two weeks, but maybe, you know, another 250, I don't know how it's going to end up, but, but it'd be a maximum of a million dollars is what they asked for. So if we don't give them a million dollars right off the bat, then we need to, you know, put it in segments, you know?
Yeah.
To help us out and maybe to help them out, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Because there, there are some.
Is it fair to?
You need to come forward.
Hi, Commissioner's Ken Harner. Is it fair to ask what the payroll is every two weeks? What would that obligation be? Am I allowed to ask that?
Yeah. Well, the payroll runs 300 and.
About 100 with all the taxes and.
Every two weeks.
Right. But they have some coming in.
So that can fluctuate.
Yeah.
We're trying to get by until we get our 3 million dollars, try to get farther down.
Thank you. I didn't, I just want to know what.
Thank you.
It's not like they're going to get nothing in, Ken. They're going to get, they may get 300 in and we have to maybe give 100 down.
I'd like to follow on to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So we want to be in a position to subsidize the payroll, is what you're saying?
Subsidize payroll.
Okay, that's, okay.
That way we're not out a total of a million dollars at one time and it works up to a million dollars cap, you know, for, you know, down the road.
I know this is Mr. Bowman in the hospital, turned every leaf over and then turned leaves over again, worked from this local to the state to the national level, trying to get funding. I know acute care hospitals and a state that does not have expanded Medicaid is a, that's the elephant in the room. That's the biggest.
Thank you.
Issue right now. I mean, that's, that's the biggest.
Well, you look at, you look at Winfield, they lost 3.2 million dollars or 3.3. We lost 2.1 or wherever it is. And they're acute care, so they get a lot more payments than what we do, but they're losing more money than what we are.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough hill to climb. I, I guess during these next six months or nine months, it'd be nice to just keep the city manager and Jennifer kind of where you guys are financially, so things aren't going as projected. The commission and especially those kind of have an idea of what to expect because, I mean, it, we don't know what three months will look like or six months will look like right now. So I think that would be key to, that would help a lot, I think, with some of this, so.
We have been living payroll to payroll for the last 90 days. I get collection calls as the CEO of the city owned hospital. I have been threatened with two lawsuits in the last 60 days because we are not able to pay, make payments in our breaching contracts. We're hoping that if we have the money available, that we can cover the payroll and get caught up.
Absolutely.
We've been around, capable within 30 days until the last.
Nine months?
We have several accounts that have gone into 90 days. We didn't.
And I, and I, and I, and that's why I said you've done everything and you keep doing and that, that's why I keep saying that, that acute care hospital and a state without expanded Medicaid, just a, it's a, it's not a, it's a mountain and it's a, seems to grow every time you take a few steps, it keeps getting taller. So, and I, so I, I mean, yeah, you've done, the hospitals and everything, the physicians continue to sacrifice sometimes to help things go, so you got to respect it.
Is there any value to that being letter writers as a governing body? I'm saying letter writers in one letter from the book, governing body. It seems to me that we've, we've, we're behind the curve on, on like the 340B and the reimbursement from pharmaceuticals. It seems to me like the state has, has reduced the reimbursements for things like Medicaid, the low census thing up there, there, there are all those things out there where they're saying less money for rural health care, which is the antithesis to, to, to our efforts to try to grow our community and make it more economically viable.
It's going to hurt a lot of.
We don't want to move to itself for healthcare.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be every small town hospital in America, but doesn't.
I don't know, we, yeah, I think, I think there's an aggregate of voices, you know, perhaps through, I don't know, we, good conversation with the league, support letters of support for, is it KHA, things like that, that.
I think we want to.
Help. Us help rural, I mean, Kansas is rural community. I'm sorry, we have what, three large cities in this state? Kansas is rural community and so it's kind of, you know, cutting off your own hands to, to be, to be hostile towards rural healthcare and rural communities, I think.
I had a meeting yesterday, Senator Ali and Senator Fag from El Dorado came down. We had a two and a half hour meeting brainstorming on financial viability of rural hospitals in Kansas. So we are doing everything we can to work with the federal level as well as the state level. But like you said, as a cute PPS hospital, we're behind the eight ball to begin with.
Yes, you are. I mean, you are, and that's.
Okay. So are we ready to move on for?
I think we understand what we're supposed to do.
Okay. So, yeah, we got it.
Figure it out.
SCK for the compensating use. I don't know how you worded that, but.
We're on city manager updates.
No.
No, we have, we added that, yeah.
Added it for.
So I believe we will request to distribute available funds in the unplugged healthcare sales tax fund to the hospital for uncompensated care.
Okay.
In the amount of?
In the amount.
What do we have in it? I think it should be 3,000, wasn't it?
Yeah. We have another distribution coming next week if you want to wait for that.
You want to wait for that?
73,182,18.
Want to wait for the December distribution? All right. So, and then we'll get a check over to you as soon as that comes in?
Oh, I need to make him.
Well, yeah, we need to, but.
I moved what he said.
Okay, she moves what he said. Do we have a second on what he said?
Second.
So moved on what he said.
In other words, you're going to get reversed, this check plus what comes in next week or the end of this month? Okay.
Yeah, the sales tax distribution should be coming. Wait next week.
Okay.
And it is for.
Uncompensated care.
Yes, make sure we put that in.
Okay.
We have some.
Right.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
You.
Any further discussion?
Who made the motion again? For Lizzy? She's going to know.
Okay, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify with aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Can we do a resolution?
Yeah. Resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to approve a bid recommended by Smith and Oaks submitted by APEC of Kansas to resurface US 166 from H Street to Summit Street and not to exceed 458,787 dollars.
So, yeah, APEC was a little bid on that project. That is a CCL grant project paying a $10,000 of money for CCL and then the city funds will be 158,787 for that.
And we've got that in our budget, right?
This is just to approve the bid. We'll be back at a meeting, probably the first meeting in January with the contracts and things.
I'm the city of Arkansas City to approve a bid recommended by Smith and Oaks submitted from APEC Kansas to resurface US 166 from H Street to Summit Street and not to exceed 458,787 dollars.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. City manager.
So we just received notice that we will be getting an additional 26,921 dollars in opioid funds towards by the end of this year, so those dollars keep flowing in.
How much we got total?
Uh, the first one we received was in about five, in the 5,000 dollar range. So this will, this will trick on over years.
So we do, we have, right now we're just going to put it in an account until we figure out something?
Yeah, we have a special account. Now, it's one of the budget amendments that, that you guys did tonight. Chief Burr is kind of the keeper of those funds. They'll be typically. We're going to use the funds. So as we, you were just mentioning earlier about having a chance to, to visit with legislators at the state and federal levels, we'll have a couple of opportunities here. The Great American Water Taste Test will be again in Washington DC in February 6th to the 9th. So if you'd like to attend, that's a great chance to go to the Hill and visit with our legislators about things of interest to us and be the best tasting water in Kansas again, so we'll be there. So if you're interested in learning more about that, let me know. We had a meeting out at Strouderville this last week about pavement replacement on 77 from Winfield Arc City. So over the next several years, it'll probably start in the spring of '25 and '26, but they're going to completely replace the pavement on 77 and do some realignment around Strouderville. They will start on the northbound lanes, close those and move all the traffic to the southbound lanes, replace all that, do the realignment, and then they'll come back and do the southbound lanes then. They're also going to resurface the bridge over the BASF out there. It's in pretty poor shape and they're going to resurface that, so. So in the 24, 26, 25, 26 timeframe, we'll be down to two lanes between Arc City and Winfield and Little Lake Communities, but it'll be a lot nicer when it's done, so just be aware of that. Also, I don't know if any, I know Commissioner Warren's had a chance to attend the data walk for Cali County. Chief Burr and Nick are going to be hosting one at the end of January. It's really worth your time to go. There's a lot of good information. I think the information that they present on the different, the poverty, mental health issues, education, housing, childcare are all items that, as you guys make policies and decisions up there, you need to be aware of some of the things that are going on. So really encourage you to attend the one on the 31st of January and I think you'll get an invitation. And then I'd like to also schedule a data, data walk for just the city internal, for the city leaders, elected officials and management to then come back and, and look at it as a more focused, how's it affect us as a city type thing, so. For that stuff, Local Government Day for REAP is going to be January 25th. And again, that'll be a great chance we could go up beforehand and visit with our legislators and then they have a, the mayor's association has their functions early in the day and then they have Local Government Day where we have a chance to learn more about issues that are going on at the legislature. And then a reception afterwards where we can have a few heavy orgers and talk to legislators about some of our issues that we want to, that we need, want to see brought to light. And in that stack of paper also provided the 23 joint legislative agenda for REAP. So there's the items that, that REAP has found that they want to work on as a region together and, and you know, it's education, mental health, water, employment, childcare, transportation, infrastructure, the themes there. So there's a little more detail on, on that page about what they're looking for there. And then finally, Ken, you had a water summit two weeks ago and this, and this water summit focused only on municipal issues. A lot of the state level water summits focus on ag, sand, municipal, but this is totally municipal. I provided a sheet there for you guys to, some of the feedback they received from the participants and it's kind of good, a lot of the same things that we're facing that they brought up and do some of those things. It's just more educational, so you kind of know we're on the same page and we're, we all face a lot of similar issues as municipal water providers, so. And that's really all the updates I had.
Items for discussion by commissioners?
I've got one thing.
Okay.
Ken Harner came to our workstation last Friday and talked about, isn't that Chief Harner, I want to ask you a question that he had a cattle truck come down his first street going to Brahms and we can't, you know, we, they're not, I think we got, I think we got a, a thing that says that.
Sign says no trucks.
Yes, it's fine, says no trucks, but I think we got it, well, probably what we ought to do is put a sign up there, maybe we got a fine for a hundred dollars if they go down the side streets. Is that right or?
I believe so.
Okay. Well, my question is, but why don't we put one of those signs up, you know, saying a hundred dollars if they go down that street or something? And if you, you know, the problem is you're not ever going to be around to cash them because you're doing other things and maybe it's, you know, maybe the, the public, you know, I mean, Ken sees that truck goes down his street and he goes down to Brahms, eats the hamburger, maybe he calls the police and, you know, maybe you come and, you know, give him a ticket, however you want to do it, you know? But we can't have, you know, like Ken said, somebody's going to get killed on that little side street because it's not very wide and stuff.
Yeah, I believe that's something that we can talk about to see a little, maybe put in a sign.
Okay. Anything else? Comments from the audience, not on the agenda?
Yeah, this wasn't on the agenda. Jay brought this up and like he said, I was in the workstation Friday and I spoke to Randy here when I come in. The sign that's there with the red slash through it, no trucks, is not all that big and I suggested to increase that so many square inches and the sign that's already there, you can relabel it for the fine. But Jay, I don't think a hundred dollars get any attention anymore.
Well, I mean, that's what we'd have to change or, like Leslie, you said, or what was that called?
The truck for the.
Truck violation?
Yeah.
That's, that's a hundred dollars plus 96 court costs. It's 196 dollars.
But, you know, litter and trash on our highways, most places is 500. Even 500 dollars today is no money, you know? I'd like to see that more than 100.
Well, I think we're going to have to have a, we can't.
You have to change the ordinance, what do you have to change the ordinance or whatever it is?
And that was my next question, what's going to be required to do that? But if we take and want to be responsible for our communities and the citizens in our communities, we need to address them semis. That's not the first time semis went down my street and I emailed you all last week. And I've talked to the chief before, so I think that's a good place to start and won't cost a lot of money. Put a sign up there that says 500 dollars, no trucks. And last commission meeting, Mr. Burr was asked the question by me when he was wanting tasers for a five year contract. And I asked, well, how many times a year do you? And I asked, well, how many times a year do you taser somebody in our Kansas City? He said three, because it gets around in the community. They stop and obey the commands if the officer pulls the taser, because they know what they're gonna get. If a few of these truckers get a fine, it gets our attention, the word's gonna get around, and, and I think it'll be a positive.
Well, let's look into it for maybe our next work session and see if we can change that to a higher level. Okay.
And our next is the executive session?
I would make a motion that we recess into an executive session to discuss a potential real estate development site pursuant to KS AID 75 dash 4319 B6 preliminary discussions of the acquisition of real property exception.
So a motion in a second, what's the timeframe?
I would hit five minutes with the.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
So at 7:27 ish.
Yeah, let's, let's go 7:28.
7:28, yeah.
Just read any further actions after the executive session?
No, there wouldn't be any this time. I think all is fine.
Are we recording again?
Yep, we're on.
I'm tired of sitting, go ahead.
Okay. Did we need to come back to our session? Yeah, we did.
Did I make a, what, we gotta make a motion to get back into the regular meeting, or?
No.
You have anything else?
So you wanted to do the holiday calendar?
That was just for information more than anything.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
You're adjourned. Apparently, I'm not supposed to ask, because anyone might have anything.